We'll see if I can get the family up there. I don't know. I think you said family, which broke the time. So we're gonna get some units. So I have a couple ideas to try to get more units off the ground. But I'm not the decision maker. Who knows? We'll see what happens. Yeah, it's exciting. And I'm glad that you came to the meeting.
Oh, yeah. That was great. And that's what I told him. That, you know, I think you're willing to at least have a conversation about it. Yeah. Yeah, it was kind of funny. I was talking to them at swim meet. Because my son, Brian, he's got it.
We have pizza now.
I was getting it. Ellen's home. And I said, so have you seen this? And she's like, no. Really? So I got it to Dave, who got it to Ellen, who got it to me. She's like, just give it to Dave. Give it to Ellen. Give it to me. So that worked. Small town.
Uh huh. Yep, we're starting to process it. No, thank you. I already did. Did I get that?
Yes.
And yes, we're gonna talk about it. Hi. Yes. I'm gonna email them, but I'll just... Lori, does anyone ask? Oh, we could make them. Yeah, no, that's great. You didn't need to email in just... If people already had them scheduled, it's good just to know how many we have. There's couples so far, but thank you.
Yeah, no, we'll do something at least with the else that's sort of stripped. All right.
Yeah.
Did you read?
Yes, there was an agenda and two other...
Got it. Don't ask her. That might be interesting.
How are you doing? Good. Drink was okay. Yeah. It was fine. There was a lot of weather. So it was nice.
So that's all that's...
He's gonna have like money here. He's gonna help us.
I can tell you by the pretty bird. Oh, I see.
You know.
Yeah.
I'm trying to...
We're gonna stay here. Stay here.
Is there a room out there else?
Yeah.
Sure?
Hi, how are you? Okay. So I always call...
Ah, I'm flying. I want to see the Murphy or...
Yeah, how did that go?
Oh, my goodness. Good guy.
Good. The one that we did at the high school, we're gonna... I'm gonna give everybody a chance to share. While Patty and Tosh are here to share. There are serieses, but I can talk about the one we did at the high school. It was really great. It was really insightful. So good. This is where our show's hardly on. Right. Back there.
Us guys converge. And they need to help people. We carry lunch. Dress. Just need to have these plans come together. And I remember to bring some samples. Yeah, where were you? Pass around, so.
My pleasure. Thank you. Son of a sport meeting.
Oh, that... So is that always the third Wednesday? Dang it. No, Charlotte?
Cause I knew there was a sketch. I got a couple here that members, Mike Roy, said he liked... He liked Saturday after hours, but he misses it because of the board meet. We've been same day for... Let's start up.
Really? Hmm.
So hard. Yes, it is. We should change our board meetings. We're trying to have our board meetings on the third Wednesday and then go straight to business after hours.
How long will it take?
It's always... Because Charlotte Wado was on Angel, wasn't she? Well...
It's not that far.
That's a... Maybe it's a drop in.
You're out of here, buddy.
Yeah. I have a feeling they'll overpromise, underpromise and overdeliver. I think it won't be that long. Yeah. Obviously have to... Yeah. I just had some questions from the... A kite festival. For a while. Like majority of kites. So they better be.
My favorite restaurant's moving.
Is that?
Oh, yeah, they're moving in the...
It's gonna be exciting. There's... They're giving them pizza.
What happened on parking?
So I don't think... Uh, that's his department.
Parked tables. They're moving to new locations.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Hey, where do I know?
Yep. We'll see how that works.
Should be good. Should be good.
Okay, I think we're on the air.
You're ready?
You ready?
I'm ready.
Oh, hi. Ready? Yeah. Let me in. Well, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all, I guess, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's flying, just flying into 2018. I don't know if everybody else feels like that, but I certainly do. It's... The months are passing. February especially. It's gone fast. Anyhow, well, we're getting... We're nearing the end of our process here. We're getting there. Tonight, we wanna talk about, just provide you a quick update on outreach numbers where we are. Share the results of the community priority survey. We'll talk just for a moment about the vision plan outline. And I actually, tonight, remembered to bring some samples from other communities of actual vision plans. So we'll pass those around here in a bit. And then, we're gonna spend the majority of our time actually doing a focus group discussion. You saw in the emails that we invited all of you to host your own focus groups. So we thought what might be helpful is to do a focus group discussion here. We did one with the high school students earlier this month, which was awesome. Me and Patty, Crone and I went together and we had a group of 15, split them into two groups. And just really smart, engaged teenagers that had some really insightful things to share. And so I'll share some highlights from that in a bit. And I know Richard hosted one with some of the managers here from city staff. And Tosh, who can't be with us tonight, also did a version of a focus group at the Realtors' meeting. And so he got to engage with 80 Realtors from the region here. And so they had some good discussion as well. So we'll talk more about that. But host our own focus group and then make sure that you guys feel well-prepared to host your own. And then finally, we will talk about some of the next steps in the process. That sound good? Everybody on board with that? Okay. This looks very small, but the point is, is that we've been doing a ton of outreach. We have from our surveys to just e-blast and intercept surveys that we did last summer. Meetings that we've held, now getting into the focus group meetings, our social media engagement. Just the number of participants have been almost 4,000. So those are good outreach numbers. And that doesn't even necessarily include the engagement numbers from social media. That's strictly our audience that we have from our site. So I feel like we've got some pretty strong engagement thus far. And the number of ideas and comments we received, I think reflects that. So the priority survey, we extended that a bit and ended up having over, just a little over 800 people respond. And 572 complete responses where they answered every question. And so what I did to just give you a snapshot of the results, and I can send you... Or you have in the... They provided these. So I updated the list, vision ideas, and incorporated all of the survey responses. So you can see the full sheets. But this includes from intercept surveys, all of the online surveys. So these numbers, the votes over here, that includes everything. And so since the last time you saw this in December, I've included all of the new priority survey numbers in there as well. So as far as the top 10 for each section or for each focus area, that's what I've listed here on the slides. So you can see for activities and attractions, bringing food trucks to Lincoln City was the top... The top one there. And then under that, more places and opportunities for teens and young adults together, which we had some really good discussion about this specific one with the... Our focus groups at the high school. So these are the top 10. Sand walking hiking trails, a boardwalk, more indoor activities, more things for kids ages toddler to elementary to do. A teen center, expanding farmer's market offerings, opportunities to explore and enjoy the natural environment and more beach festivals. Enhancing mobility, more sidewalks and pedestrian connections, reducing traffic congestion. Those are some of the... Our top two there. Environmental sustainability, offering citywide recycling and providing more education for residents and tourists was the top suggestion with 428 votes on that one. So lots and lots of comments on that. Also launching a trash public education campaign and just providing more trash receptacles in general. On community health and safety, the top two there. So again, this one came up under enhancing mobility as well, but planning and building a better pedestrian network. You know, the safe crosswalks and using lights, flags, signage and other improvements. And then the second one there is to develop a program or services to work with transients and provide better service, including mental health services. Under economic opportunity in housing, top one there with 462 votes on that. Develop affordable housing and facilitate housing options. And then the second one down is recruit businesses that provide year-round family wage drops and benefits. Under education and learning, improve and upgrade Lincoln City schools. And again, we had some conversations with the teens about that as far as what does that mean? Cause that's pretty broad. So we received some feedback from them. Emphasize outdoor activities and educational opportunities. So and then proactive job training for you. Under arts and culture, the top few there were continue to maintain, support and fund a cultural center, improve it to be a state-of-the-art cultural center. More art programs in schools at all grade levels and offer more local artists' works and shops. Develop a Lincoln City brand, shop or brand. Under sense of place and community identity, this top one here with 439 votes was provide an incentive program for downtown merchants to complete remodels and storefront beautification projects. And then the second one, create a downtown central gathering place, town square, pedestrian plaza, village green type amenity. And third one there, maintain the Lincoln City small town feel and preserve the relaxing beach community vibe. Quality community services, top one here was underground utilities to improve reliability and eliminate eyesore. And then second one, improve trails and parks. The question we added that you guys had asked about was where do you get your community news in Lincoln City? And so this one here, the news guard, print or online, was our top vote getter. But I will say the others, the write-ins, most, a majority of those were listed as various Facebook pages. So I can share this chart electronically with everybody. But second one was newslincolncounty.com, the city's website. You can see here's the radio station, Oregon Coast Daily News and the Newport News Times, print or online version. So that was just kind of an added question. But I think that it's interesting because a lot of the things Steve was mentioning... Oh, Steve, and I will say that there was a... The question, the open-ended one, if you have another news source where you get your news, you were called out specifically. Somebody said they get their news from Steve Griffiths, so.
Oh, no, I have nothing.
Steve Griffiths.com? So we... We were looking through the results at our project team meeting and that one stood out and we all laughed about it. So if we can get on your listserv or anything, we can get on your listserv or e-blast, that'd be great. Cause apparently you are a good source of community news. But a lot of the things, Steve, you mentioned earlier, that some of the things on this idea list already exist. And so, you know, in some instances, it's just better leveraging these sources to get the word out about some of the programs and things that are already in existence that people just may not know about. So any other comments? This was one that you guys came up with that you were interested in getting information on. Any reactions? Surprises?
Surprise, Facebook is not there.
Well, it came in... It came up in the other write-in, but there's no, I guess, I don't know, there's no Central City Facebook page. We've been using it for this project, but to my knowledge, I don't...
I don't think there is one.
There isn't none. Yeah. I keep begging them to let me start.
Well, I think just given the number of people who say they get their news on Facebook, that's a really kind of a powerful data point. So to make an argument for that, a lot of people go there for their news. So I don't know who's... Who should be the owner of it or where it should live, but some sort of community central Facebook.
So do you have anything to add?
There you go. So sign them up for that. They can be the lead.
Steve's in charge.
Any other reactions to... You guys have the full list in front of you, so I didn't wanna read through each one, but any... There weren't a lot of shifts from the last time we looked at this list as far as what moved. There were a couple things that moved in placement, but not a whole lot. Steve?
I think some of the items on this list are very similar to each other. For example, under activities and attractions for all ages, number three, the one that banks number three is kind of similar to the one that banks number nine. And I was thinking, collapse some of these categories into each other. That one would put outdoor activities where it's called. But it's just...
So what's happening with these right now is the project team and staff are... City staff are reviewing them to just go through and see which ones either... Maybe some of these things are already in existence, which ones should be combined and which focus area it should live under, what makes the most sense. If there's... They're looking, they're reviewing this to see if there's anything that is just like illegal or not feasible. Maybe there's already, a study's already been conducted and it's just absolutely not possible. I don't know that there's usually many of those things that pop up, but there's... There may be one or two, I'm not sure. And so some of that collapsing and combining is happening.
Anything that has to do with the Bay falls into the federal estuary management plan and they have turned off select Bay City commercial activity. So to get the federal government to turn it on, that would be a great deal. Since it's the plan for every estuary down the Oregon coast and they evaluated that in 1982. So some of those plans, like bring fishing back, that would take almost a act of God kind of thing.
Right. Yeah. And so for something like that to show up as a top priority in a plan when you know something like that's already happening.
Exactly.
Those are the kinds of things that we're trying to filter out. And then to be able to put a note in there somewhere so that people can kind of track, you know, what happened in the engagement. And I submitted an idea where to go. And so we can document that somewhere in the appendix, so.
So they don't stop...
People don't think that we were just ignoring it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
And there's another one under the same, activities and attractions for all ages, number 29. Let the public into Salashand Beach. The public actually does have access to Salashand Beach. I walk there all the time.
And it's not in Lincoln City?
It doesn't have... And it's not in Lincoln City, right?
Think about it. Priorities of going through this exercise was to essentially identify what Steve was just talking about, some of the redundancies or in the data. So it might make sense to, on a Facebook page the city has, doesn't have, or is the communication tool for it, reflect that, you know, yeah, we've gone through this and there's a lot of things, in fact, we do have that you might not have there, that the community might not be aware of. Cause that would reveal an existing scenario. Cause I think you imagine Lincoln City is going to a desired scenario. And I think the contrast there is really...
Yeah, and I think to beyond exist what it... What already is in place, we need to think about other groups who are working towards similar goals. So I know that some people are working towards planning that connects to the planning here. So that might be another way to...
Any other thoughts or reactions to the list? We'll continue to, as we get it refined, send you guys updated versions so you can see how it's coming along. The next thing I wanted to share, some of you were here last time, so we talked a little bit about the vision plan outline. And there were several questions that just made me recognize that it's hard to envision exactly how these plans come together. So I just wanted to share a little... There's... I have two copies here of the Twalatin vision plan. This is its second iteration. This is the one I obviously use heavily. It's when I work with them, it's taped on the side and kind of falling apart. So be gentle with it. I'll pass it around. This is a newer copy, so feel free to look at those ones. There's... This one is from the city of Bend. It's their... I'm not sure if it's their most recent version, but this is not one that we did. This is another, they worked with another consulting firm, but it just kind of gives you an idea of another style. This is the Hillsborough, their most recent iteration, the 2035 plan. And what I wanna point out in here, so you'll see in this outline, there's, you know, an introduction, transmittal letter, there's acknowledgements, there's background about the vision, which talks about its purpose, the process and timeline, the roles that this team played, the project team, the various stakeholders. It usually talks about the outreach activities and engagement numbers. And then you get into the actual vision and action plan results. So vision statements, focus areas and actions, and an implementation plan. And then there's usually an appendix. So here, Hillsborough's is a good example of that, transmittal letter, you know, something from their task force. This kind of talks about the plan in general and how it's laid out. And then this gets into their initiatives and actions. And so they'll have an action, a lead community partner, and then the timeline for each one. So here's... This is their education and community involvement. So they have... They call them goal statements. And then you can see that's how it's laid out. Then in the back, we talked, I think they have theirs in here. Nope, they don't. Beaverton has theirs. So in Beaverton's, it's laid out very similar, but we've talked about, well, what happens to some of the notes and the actions? So in Beaverton's, in their appendix, they have the action here listed, and then they also include partner notes. So that the intent is clear from the engagement that they did, you know, what people meant by like expand. I don't know. For example, here they have involve the public in traffic solutions. And then they have just some notes from... So that whoever is the lead partner in this kind of knows what the intent was when they go to implement. So I'll pass these around.
And then what is utilization by community? These are very expensive pieces to produce.
So that's why I only have a couple hard copies. Now, some cities will just put them online. And so Hillsborough, for example, they actually produce theirs in both English and Spanish and have some print versions of them. But they actually, they have a website dedicated to their vision. And so you can peruse all of its content online, which makes it... That's a much cheaper way to put it up. You guys, when we developed our start at this project, you have a website and the city will own that domain going forward. So you'll have a document like this. I don't know how, if you'll print copies of it, or that's kind of up to you, but you'll have something that is similar. So you can either have a PDF version of it or you can actually have it printed. But it's nice to be able to look through and see what they look like. This is Hillsborough's old one, the 2020 version. So I just wanted to provide something tangible to kind of help visualize where it's going.
Sarah, did you get a sense of how these communities progressed after the experience of all?
Yes. So I mean, I can share the experience with... We're still working in Twalatin, Beaverton and Hillsborough. And so we just wrapped up Twalatin's annual report. So that plan was adopted in early 2014. So it's about four years old. So they are at 80, I think 82% completion of their plan. And either the actions are ongoing things that they're implementing, or they've been completed and checked off the list. Hillsborough, their plan is newer. You could go on their website, they just wrapped up, I think, their annual plan, but or their progress, annual progress report. And so I'm not sure exactly where theirs is. They might be at 30 or 40% at this stage, but...
Do those communities have the full support of the city council that's behind it?
They view the process that we're using here is kind of modeled after... Hillsborough was the first community that Jason worked in where this model kind of took off. And a lot of cities have replicated that. So that's the same process we're using here. Does that answer it?
Yeah, it gets to it. I mean, you know, some of the key drivers behind these things, you know, economic independence, sense of place, mobility, transportation, housing, you know, essentially just some of the things that are coming out on here on the coast. You know, some of the things that are more inland, you know, it's a different mix. Are they similar? Are the communities prioritizing their expenditures, planning things? That's sort of...
Beaverton's vision, for example, so when they do their budget process, nothing goes in the budget unless it's... They have... It has to be connected to the vision in some way. Or like all budget packages that come before the council reference the vision plan in some way. Which I didn't have... I don't have a hard copy of their latest version. You have to go online to get it, or I can send it to you, but it's... They have... That's how integrated their process has become. And they're in their second version of their vision.
With that intelligence, that information, I think it would be very useful for this community in terms of knowledge transfer, best practices, how early communities done it, what have they learned from, you know, what's the accomplishments? And then, of course, you know, Lincoln City puts its own signature on the process, you know, contributions collaboratively into it. I think that'd be a really good learning experience for the community, that the community can benefit from.
So one of the recommendations that I'll include in your plan in the implementation section, because, you know, you're... I'm not gonna... I won't be here to continue the implementation, but I will provide some guidelines or recommendations for how to continue on. And what that will essentially say is maintain some sort of vision team like this, whether it's this team exactly, or some sort of advisory committee, or, you know, some smaller version of this group to kind of provide the oversight and to check in with the partners. I'll provide some tips and recommendations on partner recruitment and how to go about doing that. And you'll see in those vision plans that there's a whole list of partners, community agencies and others that get assigned to help implement these actions. To say that we're gonna take the lead on it and we'll bring in other folks to help us get this implemented and we'll continue to work on it. And so then, how that works is then they... The vision team or the advisory committee each year checks in with those lead partners a couple times over the year to see how they're doing, see what kind of support can be offered. And then the vision partners at the end of the year, they provide, fill out some sort of survey to share whatever the latest progress is on their action. And so that kind of helps to keep things, people accountable, or agencies accountable for implementation. So then a report comes forth every year, just share, being able to share and updates with their community in some way, shape or form. And that can come out in news stories, radio interviews, social media posts. I mean, there's a variety of ways that you can share updates about the good work that's happening in your community and point back to say, hey, we listened, we heard you, we've got this plan and we are really working hard to bring it to life. And get involved where you can. If there's an action here that you're passionate about, we're always looking for volunteers to help us bring it to life. So in a nutshell, that's how the implementation step works. And I'll be able to share some of that in your plan or in a memo to staff, whatever makes the most sense.
Which is the city that connected the budget planning to the vision?
Uh, Beaverton.
Beaverton, yeah.
I'm pretty sure they still do that. I haven't heard any different than they do.
Scenario, because I think you imagine Lincoln City is going to a desired scenario. And I think the contrast there is really.
Yeah, and I think to beyond exist what it, what already is in place. We need to think about other groups who are working towards similar goals. So I know that some people are working towards planning that connects to the planning here. So that might be another way to. Any other thoughts or reactions to, to the list? We'll continue to, as we get it refined, send you guys updated versions so you can see how it's, how it's coming along. The next thing I wanted to share, some of you were here last time, so we talked a little bit about the vision plan outline. And there were several questions that just made me recognize that it's hard to envision exactly how these plans come together. So I just wanted to share a little, there's, I have two copies here of the Twalatin Vision Plan. This is its second iteration. This is the one I obviously use heavily. It's when I work with them, it's taped on the side and kind of falling apart. So be gentle with it, I'll pass it around. This is a newer copy, so feel free to look at those ones. There's, this one is from the city of Bend. It's their, I'm not sure if it's their most recent version, but this is not one that, that we did. This is another, they worked with another consulting firm, but it just kind of gives you an idea of another style. This is the Hillsborough, their most recent iteration, the 2035 Plan. And what I want to point out in here, so you'll see in this outline, there's, you know, an introduction, transmittal letter. There's acknowledgements, there's background about the vision, which talks about its purpose, the process and timeline, the roles that this team played, the project team, the various stakeholders. It usually talks about the outreach activities and engagement numbers. And then you get into the actual vision and action plan results. So vision statements, focus areas and actions, and an implementation plan. And then there's, there's usually an appendix. So here Hillsborough's is a good example of that, transmittal letter. You know, something from their task force. This kind of talks about the plan in general and how it's laid out. And then this gets into their initiatives and actions. And so they'll have an action, a lead community partner, and then the timeline for each one. So here's, this is their education and community involvement. So they have, they call them goal statements, and then you can see that's how it's laid out. Then in the back, we've talked, I think they have theirs in here. Nope, they don't. Beaverton has theirs. So in Beaverton's, it's laid out very similar, but we've talked about, well, what happens to some of the notes and the actions? So in Beaverton's, in their appendix, they have the action here listed, and then they also include partner notes so that the intent is clear from the engagement that they did. You know, what people meant by like expand, I don't know. For example, here they have involve the public in traffic solutions. And then they have just some notes from, so that whoever is the lead partner in this kind of knows what the intent was when they go to implement. So I'll pass these around.
And then what is utilization by the community? These are very expensive pieces to produce.
So that's why I only have a couple of copies. Now, some cities will just put them online. And so Hillsborough, for example, they, they actually produce theirs in both English and Spanish and have some print versions of them. But they actually, they have a website dedicated to their vision, and so you can peruse all of its content online, which makes it, that's a much cheaper way to put it up. You guys, when we developed our start of this project, you have a website and the city will own that domain going forward. So you'll have a document like this. I don't know how, if you'll print copies of it, or that's kind of up to you, but you'll have something that is similar. So you can either have a PDF version of it, or you can actually have it printed. But it's nice to be able to look through and see what they look like. This is Hillsborough's old one, the 2020 version. So I just wanted to provide something tangible to kind of help visualize where it's going.
Sarah, did you get a sense of how these communities progressed after the experience?
Yes, so I mean, I can share the experience with, we're still working in Twalatin, Beaverton, and Hillsborough. And so we just wrapped up Twalatin's annual report. So that plan was adopted in early 2014. So it's about four years old. So they are at eighty, I think eighty-two percent completion of their plan. And either the actions are ongoing things that they're implementing, or they've been completed and checked off the list. Hillsborough, their plan is newer. If you go on their website, they just wrapped up, I think, their annual plan, but, or their progress, annual progress report. And so I'm not sure exactly where theirs is. They, they might be at thirty or forty percent at this stage, but.
Those communities have the full support of the city council.
They view, the process that we're using here is kind of modeled after, Hillsborough was the first community that Jason worked in where this model kind of took off. And a lot of cities have replicated that. So that's the same process we're using here. Does that answer?
Yeah, it gets to it. I mean, you know, some of the key drivers behind these things, you know, economic dependence, sense of place, mobility, transportation. Essentially, you know, essentially just some of the things that are coming out on here on the coast. You know, some of the things that are more inland, you know, it's a different mix. Are they similar? Are the communities prioritizing their expenditures, planning things? That sort of.
Beaverton's vision, for example, so when they do their budget process, nothing goes in the budget unless it's, they, it has to be connected to the vision in some way. Or like all budget packages that come before the council reference the vision plan in some way. Which I didn't have, I don't have a hard copy of their latest version. You have to go online to get it, or I can send it to you, but it's, they have, that's how integrated their process has become. And they're in their second version of their vision.
With that intelligence, that information, I think it would be very useful for this community in terms of knowledge transfer, best practices, how are the communities done it? What have they learned from, you know, looks the accomplishments? And then, of course, you know, Lincoln City puts its own signature on the process, you know, contributions collaboratively into it. I think that'd be a really good learning experience for the community, that the community could benefit from.
So one of the recommendations that I'll include in your plan in the implementation section, because, you know, you're, I'm not gonna, I won't be here to continue the implementation, but I'll, I will provide some guidelines or recommendations for how to continue on. And what that will essentially say is maintain some sort of vision team like this, whether it's this team exactly, or some sort of advisory committee, or, you know, some smaller version of this group to kind of provide the oversight and to check in with the partners. I'll, I'll provide some tips and recommendations on partner recruitment and how to go about doing that. And you'll, you'll see in those vision plans that there's a whole list of partners, community agencies and others that get assigned to help implement these actions, to say that we're gonna take the lead on it, and we'll bring in other folks to, to help us get this implemented, and we'll continue to work on it. And so then, how that works is then they, the vision team or the advisory committee, each year checks in with those lead partners a couple times over the year to see how they're doing, see what kind of support can be offered. And then the vision partners, at the end of the year, they provide, fill out some sort of survey to share whatever the latest progress is on their action. And so that kind of helps to keep things, people accountable, or agencies accountable for implementation. So then a report comes forth every year, just share, being able to share and updates to the community in some way, shape, or form. And that can come out in news stories, radio interviews, social media posts. I mean, there's a variety of ways that you can share updates about the good work that's happening in your community and point back to say, hey, we listened, we heard you, we've got this plan, and we are really working hard to bring it to life. And get involved where you can. If there's, if there's an action here that you're passionate about, we're always looking for volunteers to help us bring it to life. So in a nutshell, that's how the implementation step works. And, and I'll be able to share some of that in your planner, in a memo to staff, whatever makes the most sense.
Which is the city that connected the budget planning to the vision?
Uh, Beaverton.
Beaverton, yeah.
I'm pretty sure they still do that. I haven't heard any different than they've changed it, but that was.
Sounds like good.
Yeah, and, and there's lots of ways, there, there's lots of ways to do that. I'm sure I could get some information from Holly, the person that manages that project over there, to see how it's, check in, see how it's been working. Other questions? Can you speak? All right, so do you guys want to delve into our focus group discussion? All right, let's do it. So as mentioned, we're hoping that you all will schedule your own focus groups, but I thought this would be a good way to get a start of it. I think Kate and your email, obviously, and team attached all the resources. So in there, you'll find just a general guide, which shares an overview of how to set one up and how to do it. And then there's an actual script that you can plug information into. There's a list of questions you can choose from. Pass some materials around. Just want to pass those down over there. So you'd be surprised how fast this actually goes. We have forty-five minutes to spend with the high school students. And I think I got, Patty got through like four questions, and our groups just broke them. So we had group seven and group eight. And so in forty-five minutes, I think she got through four questions and I got through like six, because I used more post-its than she did, to try and expedite the process. So you'll see, as we do this, how, how the post-its can help make it go faster, especially if you have a really large group. But the point of the focus groups is, as you saw, some of those actions are pretty, some of them are very general. And so this is a way where we can actually get some very specific ideas, such as, you know, improve Lincoln City schools. So when we asked the teens, okay, well, how, what does that mean for you? What would you want to see? How would you have enhanced your education experience in Lincoln City? And they had a variety of comments, such as, you know, create, offer more extracurricular classes, things that are more related to a career path, update our textbooks. We wish we had more updated, recent textbooks with, with more current happenings in them. What else? They, more foreign language offerings, more folks from just either within the community or outside the community to come in, to talk about just their careers in general, to help inspire different, different paths that these students could take as they think about what they want for their future. What else did they share? Lots of stuff about activities. One, one I thought was really interesting that connects to another idea in the vision was there's this idea about hosting beach cleanups. They're like, we just lack for things to do. And the school environment is one of the few places where we have this real community vibe amongst young people. And we just wish that there were more opportunities to create that experience elsewhere, like even hosting a beach cleanup. And I was like, perfect idea, because that connects with one of the other things. So the teens are just longing for things to do, other reasons to get together on weekends and after school, to, you know, be around their peers, build leadership experiences, and, and just serve their community. So anyhow, those were just a few examples of things that they offered up, specific things. When I asked them about activities and attractions, or how to improve their, their school experience. So for you guys, I thought we could start out with the same question that they had. So using this big post-it note, just make a few notes about, or just describing your ideal community twenty years from now. Doesn't have to be Lincoln City specifically, just talk about in twenty years, just write a few notes about, or a few words about the ideal community that you're living in. All right, see just another minute. Since Laura finished first, I'll let her share what hers is.
Feels like a neighborhood, but connected to the world, so we're able to pick our guests.
Okay. Holly, what exactly, so we're able to choose our guests?
Right now, I've noticed, being here and in my discussions with folks at the VCB and around, that our visitor promotion and marketing approach is kind of like, everybody! Where a lot of the community says, well, I wish that we could get some visitors that don't pre-FDRC walls and don't leave garbage all over the place. And Cannon Beach and some of the other towns who have manicured their image and managed their image can choose who they're marketing to and attract a higher qualified customer for the part of their economy that's tourism-based.
I see.
And so as we come together as a community and make something desirable, we can raise the bar and not just go, okay, everybody, clog the roads, come for lunch, leave! You know, we can have more of a managed experience where we can have a customer come and participate in that part of our economy that leaves more money locally and treats our community like we want to be treated.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Lori, you still thinking? Okay, you're good, Joe?
Idealistic community.
Okay, idealistic, so no homelessness, no crime, high employment numbers, and need for excellent education system and sense of community pride. Thank you. Roger?
Safe.
Okay.
Healthy, both economy and physically. Housing improved for all, not just lower end or the lower end of the top end. And since I'm getting to be part of that senior citizen community, activities for the seniors enlarged, even more emphasis on the community center.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Richard?
Said economically thriving, physically attractive, environmentally protected, beaches, forests, the whole city clean, peaceful, compassionate, and active.
Wonderful, thank you. Allison?
More access to economic opportunity, housing choices, education, letting great jobs.
Nikki?
Politics. Multigenerational, cultural, with opportunities to learn and grow together. Celebrate who we are via opportunities to share and learn from one another.
Okay.
So we all have purpose.
Purpose is important, yes. All right, Stuart, what do you got for us?
Could have a drum roll.
Anyway.
Beautiful to see, visit, and live in. Demonstrates and embraces the best of the Pacific Northwest living. It brings coast, ocean, and geographies together.
I like this. All right.
I have an arts district with live workspaces and cool art boutiques and galleries and nearby cafes, which are all connected to parking and pedestrian areas. We can have outdoor music in the summer and indoor art.
Thank you. Steve?
Nice. Cozy and walkable neighborhoods, diversity of social and economic classes living in the same neighborhood. Don't need a car, can walk to the library, post office, stores, theater, or restaurants. Top-notch health system, and pre-sparks of clean beaches.
Great. All right.
All right, mine's just continue to have vibrant, unique businesses, less traffic congestion, have the homeless problem solved, housing problem solved, and more activities for young people.
Great. So using the post-its makes that go a lot faster, because it would take me forever to write all of them. These are all really wonderful descriptions. Okay, so while I'm posting these up, the next question I want you to think about is we've received lots and lots of comments regarding efforts to balance the needs of both residents who live here and the tourists who visit here. So think about any specific ideas that you might have on how to balance these sometimes competing needs. All right. What comes to mind?
Well, just being able to, for the businesses to offer more full-time, year-round improvement.
Okay. We're gonna talk, I have another question related to this, so we'll, we'll come back to specifically what that looks like. Roger, what do you have?
Needs do not beat the compliment.
Okay.
Tourists won't come where they don't, where people don't live. And those who live here need tourists for employment. It's a symbiotic relationship. Each needs each other.
So I'll question on that. How, then, how do you think we arrive at this perception of the needs not being complementary? Or maybe residents here feeling somewhat slighted that the community's catering so much to tourists? Because I can see how, I can see how they are complementary, but I don't think that that's the universal perception.
It may not be the universal perception. It's what I would like to strive for. And as long as we perpetuate that, that sense, that feeling, and reinforce it continuously, we're not going to address it.
So in thinking about how to strive for that, any suggestions specifically on how do we, how do we do that?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Well, let me jump, Ken, I think you have to understand the economics of that question. Okay, you know, we talked about, you know, different elements of it. You've got people that live here year-round, you've got people that are renters, that are renters, you have people that are, and come into the community where it expands from eight and a half thousand in the wintertime to about thirty-five thousand in the summertime. I mean, you know, what are the true economics of that? And what does that mean in relation to understanding the community in twenty years' time? And how does the community learn through that and strike that win-win balance?
Lori?
So I'm gonna read what I have to say, but there's a little bit more to blow up on that, touching on both of these things. And that is, the city is a system, and for the system to function, there has to be adequate living and recreational opportunities for the things that make the system work. Tourism is only one piece of our economy, and it has to be kept in balance in order for the system to work. So one of the things we're working on that's in the idea phase is bringing in fiber optic broadband. And that can take the per capita income from twenty-three thousand in the service industry to fifty-eight to sixty-two thousand in current earnings. Where our people who live here that are servicing people at the mall can take their, their current set of skills and compete in a global market and bring in more money into our community. And so then they can compete with buying houses in addition to the people who are coming in and buying second houses and things of that nature. So just like electricity was something to keep rural America alive, broadband's gonna be something to keep us alive. Because there's three hundred miles of coastline, and if we don't do something different, we're gonna be left behind.
So, I mean, kind of summarizing that, it's really investing in that broadband infrastructure in order to provide economic prosperity.
Exactly. There's a whole nother economy we could tap into that we're just fiddering away.
I'm also having, I think, probably, this community's probably not reinventing the wheel here. And there's probably information, intelligence, history out there in other communities that have perhaps gone through this experience. So to get to the heart of your question, how do you, how do we learn, how do we strike that balance? Picks up on what I mentioned earlier about best practices from other communities. And perhaps some research needs to be done to find out what they've gone through, what they've experienced, what their learning curve was. Again, that's knowledge transfer, and then you just build from that.
Okay, so some research and analysis on best practices?
From other communities.
Okay.
Tourism industry in this community has changed drastically since I first came. Tourist in industry in this community used to be from Memorial Day to Labor Day, period. We'd catch a week in spring break, weekend, maybe a couple of weekends in February. The rest of the time, there were no tourists. That has changed. The complexion's, entire community has changed dramatically because of Lincoln City outlets and the casino. It's, it's a marked change, to me, for the better. I think we're finally getting to the point where those jobs are made available at this point in time, where twenty-five years ago, they weren't there. And there's more and more opportunities in this community than what there's ever been.
Steve, something down there?
And I think what it struck me about the responses we got from all of the research that we've done and the outreach we've done is both tourists and residents alike like living in Lincoln City because of the natural living environment and the resources here. And I think perhaps it's time for our tourism to take a slightly new direction towards high-end ecotourism, for example, and taking more advantage of our kayaking opportunities on the lakes, on the bays, in the ocean, on rivers, in the estuaries, hiking opportunities. We have world-class bird viewing sites here on the Oregon coast. And bringing these people, tourists, this type of tourists, to town, and these tourists are gonna spend more than just a day or a weekend, they may spend as long as a week.
And they go out.
At the same time, we have local residents who may be developing new industries, such as kayaking manufacturing, outdoor equipment manufacturing, and, you know, making a living off of this new approach to tourism. Because I think that's really a huge opportunity that we haven't used yet. And for example, building trails or open space areas, we're unique on the coast. We have three hundred and fifty acres of open space. I mean, that was very visionary to establish those open space areas. And we perhaps can open up more of a trail building, or perhaps horseback riding in some, but there are new opportunities here that.
Have you seen the videos that the VCB has produced?
No.
A target set exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, but the problem is people get here and go, ooh, town. And I've had that discussion with them. And so there's this, this is why we're doing this whole thing, so we get everybody on board with the vision, so that when people get here to be that higher-end tourist, that we need to elevate ourselves. They don't go, wow, the bay is beautiful and the beach is beautiful, but ooh, the town! Because you drive through town at four AM, what do you see? You see an incoherent hodgepodge of some tiredness and some newness, and the signage is all off, and, and they're. and there isn't a cohesive vision, and so that's what we're trying to get to. And the ultimate goal is to raise the bar for everybody. And if we can bring a higher, a higher, just class of tourists to town, other than just anybody who can make it over here, we're all going to be better off for good.
Other, and I think we captured that in your thoughts earlier, thank you. Thank you for sharing, and I think that is, all of these comments are really concerning. What else do you have, Vicky?
Okay. So, what I wrote was to create opportunities for tourists resident interactions. And I think, as you're talking, it's like this separated, you know? And it's like, how can we bring people together and how can we? I love Steve's idea because too, thinking about, you know, you've got a teacher who wants to go on a vacation and want, but maybe a more of a working kind of vacation, where they can come into the community for a couple of weeks, focus on something that they're passionate about, share it with the people who live here, and give that up for, you know, it's, we have a lot of opportunity for those kinds of things. And I think we need to be careful about not to discriminate against possibilities in terms of who comes here. And, you know, my other is just, I've lived here for about fifteen years now. The prior, I, you know, lived in Portland. And, you know, people in Oregon or in Portland, think of the coast. They say, our beautiful Oregon coast. They feel ownership to this place. They think of it differently than how I found when I moved here, people think of it. And so I'm not saying one is better than the other, but I'm just, to remember that people who live in Oregon love our beautiful Oregon coast, and that's something I think we can really capitalize on.
I remember driving down from Portland, down to Lincoln City in 2016. And I remember leaving eighteen and jumping down to one-on-one. At the north end of Lincoln City, never experienced it before, I come to basically a left turn. And just as I was driving down through Lincoln City, I could see glimpses of the Pacific Ocean. And my first impression was, this is a gateway to the Oregon coast, it's a gateway to the Pacific. And if this community, if this community could somehow capture that in a bottle, you know, and market that, as a place with what you're talking about, Steve, what you're talking about, Vicky, right? And really develop that, I think you'd be onto something that the entire region would gravitate to. Talk about region, I'm talking about Washington, Long Island, Idaho, Northern California. It's a gateway right into the coast, right into the Pacific Ocean.
Well, and the other thing to think about is when the convention center in Portland brings in a big crowd of people from around the country. If you look at what's offered as possibilities in terms of going beyond Portland, or what you can see in Oregon, it's always, the coast is always mentioned. And I know I've been involved with conferences and where are people going on the weekend? They're headed to the coast, they wanna show people this beautiful place, so. And there's a lot of connectivity there when you've got big national conventions and people come in to see something.
What else, what other thoughts? We haven't heard from Vicky yet.
So, Richard. I, I sort of, I'm not sure if what I'm trying to say is different from what I'm saying, I think it is, though. I, I feel like we need to, we may need to decide that at some point we have enough visitors. You know, could more of the transit room taxes go to improving the lives of the workers and the people who live here? Maybe there's a possibility that the transit room tax ordinance itself could be adjusted so that it isn't always devoted to the same categories that it is now. Because I feel like there's, we spend a lot of money trying to get more people to come, and talking about it could be the gateway, and we build out and build out, and maybe at some point we need to start thinking in a different direction and diverting more of those funds to improving the lives of residents. And not just residents, but part-time residents, two weeks a year residents, three weeks a year residents, six month a year residents, so we have all these different kinds of visitors who come here. And improvements to their lives would be important. Another thing that I thought before was that one way to balance what we're doing with visitors and residents is just start by recognizing these little pockets of poverty that exist in and among all these really nice houses, and seeing if there might be some way through incentives that we could help those people. I think ignoring the pockets of poverty is part of what creates this us and them that we experience. I don't know how to do any of those, but those are my ideas.
We're gonna talk about the, well, we're gonna talk specifically about homelessness, though, about some of those, those areas, those pockets of poverty here. Richard, I know you have another.
I've got three completely unrelated things to mention. One is that in our department head's meeting yesterday, one thing that came out is that probably most residents here don't realize the positive impacts we have from visitors. That what we said was, we have a town of eight thousand people, we have the amenities of a town of thirty thousand. We've got sixty restaurants in this town. How many other eight-thousand-person cities have sixty restaurants, that kind of thing? And so what I'm saying from that is there's an education process that's needed so that residents know what the, what the positive impacts of tourists are, not just in terms of service jobs, but there's a whole lot of other positive impacts that we have that we, as residents, recognize and develop. And we need to educate visitors about what the needs of the community are. We wanna keep it, keep it nice and not have the clips trashed and that kind of thing. That's one thing.
So, Richard, can I ask, did you guys have any discussion, or were there any specifics about how you provide that education? What makes sense?
No. We were blowing through a lot of things.
That's, no, that's good, I just thought I, I thought I'd ask, in case there was something specific.
Another thing is that we talk about residents and tourists, visitors, but we don't talk, there's like a third class of people that come here, the second homeowners. A third of our housing units are second homeowners. And we can be looking at them, because they're, they're more invested in the community, and we promote things that positively affect them, I think it can be very helpful. And the third thing totally, either of those, more related to what we're saying down here, is that Lincoln City is defined by water, literally defined by water. We've got the ocean on the west, the lake on the east, and most visitors don't even know the lake is there. We also have the bay on the south and Salmon River on the north. And I think we can, as Professor Steve was saying, is build on, you know, all the water activities and nature activities that we have. And...
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this one? Okay. So, the next question, I'm gonna try to think of that moment. So, as you saw in our survey results, this idea of food trucks has been very, very popular. So, we know that Lincoln City has lots of great restaurants, I think Richard said, over sixty, in a town of eight thousand people. So, if you, so food trucks, do you think this is a good idea? Why or why not? And if you do think it's a good idea, where do you think food trucks belong in the community? All your planners wanna know. They're listening. They're listening.
So, what was the, what was your impression of the general motivation behind people sharing that concept in general?
Food trucks?
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, my assessment is it's connected to, there's also a desire for good local food options. I also thought it was connected to, some people mentioned food trucks in a sense of, like, an economic incubator-type opportunity for, you know, a lot of restaurants at, living in Portland, you know the food truck scene there, it's everywhere. And a lot of brick-and-mortar restaurants get their starts as food trucks. It's a great way to test out a concept and for a business owner to, you know, try and figure that out. So I think that there's, so access to fresh local foods and an economic, another economic opportunity, economic growth opportunity, and just more variety. I mean, it's a trend, cities have been grappling with this. I led a focus group specifically in Tuolatin just around food trucks and where they should go, because they weren't allowed there either. Beaverton struggled with it, Hillsborough struggled with it. I know that on the list for the city management, there's been lots of conversation about how to deal with food trucks in your community, because traditional zoning regulations don't usually accommodate them. So, but as far as here, that was, that's the sentiment that I got. People wanna see them in communities because they like options, they're fun, cheap food, economic opportunities. What are your thoughts?
So what's your question?
So, my question is, what do you think? Do they belong here? Why or why not? And if they, and if your answer is yes to that, what's your idea for where they should go? Where do they make the most sense in the community? Because you can't necessarily put them on every street corner, that doesn't logistically...
Well, what I envision them, people are on the beach, they don't necessarily get in their car and leave, so it'd be great to just be able to walk up and grab some food and take it back out onto the beach to eat. Gives you an option for a lot of variety of food. You know, I'm not sure we have a place next to the beach, but I would envision somewhere down Fifty-first, down by Mo's, that they could just run, get something, and take it back.
Okay, other thoughts?
So, I would say yes with a question mark.
Okay.
And the reason being is, if it were an opportunity for our residents to, for example, if there was something connected to a community college program where they were learning how to run their small business, and this would be an opportunity, or affordable for them to operate a business, you know, so it's somehow connected to supporting and helping those who are trying to become entrepreneurs, perhaps in our community. And I know a model that I've seen is kind of like the food truck park, where you've got something going on centrally where people sit and visit, and then the trucks are kind of around the outside of the perimeter.
Is there an area specifically in town where you could see that working?
There are a lot of mini parks throughout the city, and maybe one truck or two trucks per park during certain weekends or something.
Something like that.
But I'm just kind of thinking about who owns them, who's going to bring them here? Is it gonna compete with something here already? So maybe if it were more connected as an expansion, it were an opportunity.
That's a local opportunity.
Local opportunity, right.
I think it's a good question to propose to Mo's, because they bought a food truck. I told them they couldn't have it. Yeah, I, I would...
But how well was it doing?
That, that's what I said, I think it's a good question to propose to Mo's.
Didn't they only buy it because they were doing renovations inside?
No, they take it out of the...
They take it out of the wood, over the, uh, balcony, the wineries, and lots of places like that.
Most times, you see, it was parked in front of the restaurant where they were doing renovations.
Yeah, so it, it has, they've utilized it in that class, but primarily, they got it to, I think, for going to, like, we haven't had a video, it's in the, to the craft festivals.
They had it at Pink's Fest, yeah.
I, that's a good question for Mo's.
Okay, I put some, I put it out there to gather some info.
So, my first instinct would be to say no.
And why?
Because in my mind, food trucks are an urban creation. But as I listen to Lori's comment in particular, I'm thinking, oh, yeah, that'd be kind of cool to come up off the beach and get a taco. So, but my very first instinct would, no. And the second reason is because I feel like it's an urban creation, I also hate to compete with existing restaurants and businesses. And the third thought I had is, there's not really one central location I can think of to park trucks around. There are no vacant lots like you have in a city. I mean, there are vacant lots, they've got bushes and trees on it, but anyway. So, anyway, those are my thoughts, right or wrong.
So, okay, so no, because it's, it feels like a more urban setting, and a more urban creation, and it competes with local businesses, but yes, you could see the convenience of having something close to the beach.
Yes, and I do enjoy eating, and I'm liking the idea. Everything tastes better outside.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to know if our tourists have a desire for them. We talked about it on ourselves, a lot of residents, but are the people who come here, are they looking for them?
Well, during our intercept surveys, yes, there were, the numbers, or the input we got on this was not just from the online survey. So this, this did come up a lot, a lot through those intercept surveys where we were talking with a lot of visitors.
So, my input is yes, and from my life as a former parolee district person, you put them wherever you can put them. I mean, a wide spot on the sidewalk, a truck comes by, rolls out a car, drives off, they're there for certain hours. We would wanna protect our local interests, but I just could rattle off the pines lot, the excess space of the movie theater lot, the Nell Scott Beach, there's a, they just tore down a house. There's a lot available somebody could buy and pay. The D River wayside, the Rhodes End wayside, the park across from the D River on the actual neck of the river.
Did you write others?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, I'll...
Main Street vacant lots as far as zoning is concerned, oceanfront vacant lots and mixed-use zones. And then the biggest thing is, if we're gonna be near the ocean, we need to have biodegradable packaging. Because we don't have an abundance of garbage cans, so if people leave things on the beach, because they do, they need to not hurt our wildlife.
No, for, my biggest concern is, is garbage.
Yeah.
My single biggest concern is garbage.
Steve?
It's actually not just an urban phenomenon, because I remember, I was in Joseph, Oregon, a couple of years ago, and at Joseph Lake, I got my dinner, three evenings in a row from a couple of food trucks at the park. And it was delicious, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Well, one of my favorite food trucks is the Bow Picker in Astoria, so...
Oh, true. And Tilbrook has several on their long part of one-on-one, which are going to, to the cheese factory. And it'd be interesting to know if those are legal, you know? And if so, then how do they impact the restaurants?
Like Stuart mentioned for the other one, maybe research and analysis, best practices from other, other communities, how it's working, how it's going, especially coastal ones.
There are some places where there are restaurants, but they don't really fit the needs in the height of summer and will see the lines out the door at Mo's. And I think if you allow a couple of warm food trucks, it'd be enough business for everyone.
I drive to Newport on busy summer nights to eat, because our restaurants get so full.
Well, and then are we talking temporary food trucks, they come in and they leave, or are they permanent?
I think the season would make them temporary.
Yeah.
Or like carts, where they're here in the summer, they're carted.
Twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
We did the carts here in town eight years ago, and they were primarily at the D River. And they wanted weight because it just wasn't enough business for them.
Really?
Surely, surely been dealt, sitting sat in one, Jack Robin's wife had one, there was a number of them there, right?
Do you have a question, sir?
Well, it's just kind of, one of the things that you look for in data is indicators. Obviously, when you get a four hundred, four twenty, and then what's the number on the food trucks?
It's under...
Oh, three thirty-seven. So, I mean, it's, there's obviously some buzz up. So then, I think the question is, how does the community make an informed decision about making this work? And so the, looking at the research, best practices, other communities, voting out through, what they experience?
I got that one up there.
And then, you know, make heads and tails of it. I mean, you know, the... I mean, that could be a draw, you know? 60 restaurants, you got 60 food trucks, you know? What? I don't own to that, but you know, what's, what's the next thing? You know, Food Network shows up and you got a TV show here, you can't create about it, you know? But, uh, how do you, how does the community make an informed decision about what the voice of the community is saying?
Maybe take it on with your ecotourism thing and we have the Greenest Food Truck Pod in the studio.
Because we don't want to be, I don't think, we want to be in a situation of prohibiting automobile dealers in order to protect our delivery staples. Times change.
What'd you say? We don't want, we don't want to, what to do what?
We don't want to prohibit auto dealers to protect delivery staples. Times change, technology changes, people's desires change. So we just want to be aware, be informed of where the economy is going and what people want.
And I'm wondering too whether, um.
That's an analogy, Hannah.
People see food trucks as eating more healthfully. Healthfully, I don't know about some issue behind the desire for more food trucks, you know, more diversity and better quality.
Quicker, cheaper.
That's one of the things, a quicker, cheaper way to access local food. Cause a lot of food trucks, I don't know, if in my experience anyway, they source a lot of their support away.
Well, then the food's got to be good too. Food's not good, nobody's going to buy it and they will say that it failed, but it wasn't necessarily the whole food truck concept. It was more of the food that they were serving.
Yeah.
All you got to do is go to the cultural center during the, um, farmers markets in the area that is the busiest and where the, where the food is being sold.
Well, it's good food, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I have lunch every Sunday.
Absolutely, we do as well.
Well, I think this, uh, some of your insights on this topic specifically have been helpful. It adds a little more to that, that conversation around food trucks and how that'll show up in the vision plan. The next one I want you to think about is the issue of homelessness. They told you we can circle back to this, um, poverty. So, one of the ideas is to develop programs or services, programs, services or policies to address the issue. So, um, using these small post-its, I want you each to take three. Oops, there we go. Take three post-its and on each one, think of, uh, put just a, just write one thing on it. At either a program, a service or a policy that you could see addressing the issue of poverty or homelessness. Try to come up with, try to come up with three ideas for addressing homeless, or addressing homelessness with a program, a policy or a, or a policy or service.
So an idea under each one of them?
It doesn't necessarily have to be under each one. Just, that's just to try and give you things to think about. It doesn't necessarily have to be a program or, um, it could also be a policy issue or a policy suggestion. Try to see if you can come up with three. All right. I'm Harry Markers' job, so I'll start with, um, I saw Laura's go down first, so I'll, I'll start with her and see. What are your, what are your three suggestions?
Okay, so first, laws creating disincentives for no cause 30 day quits. So we had a rash of people who ended up homeless because the housing market got hot and all of a sudden they were told, get out, we're renovating and jacking up the price. And there weren't a whole lot of places to go.
Okay.
Uh, a shelter, so we need a solution for those who already find themselves on the street. Close to or associated with a hospital, so they have close access to services in an open area where people are going to say NIMBY too much. And then quads, from my experience working in government camp, are housing units specific for singles and couples in a service-based tourism economy. They use them in government camp for the kids who work for minimum wage at all the ski resorts. Essentially, you have a community kitchen and living space with four bedroom bathrooms that are deadbolted and you rent per bedroom bathroom. You can limit it to certain employers and that's how you get background checks and good employees that can work together. And essentially you can rent the whole unit for about two grand, 500 bucks a unit. And what that does is it makes it so that the folks who can only find part-time work or who also want to go to college or do other things other than work three jobs in the community aren't couch surfing or stacking up in apartments or doing that type of thing because we don't have that solution anymore for that, um, flexible, uh, employment base that we need for summer hiring. During summer hiring, we're running out of people. It used to be that college kids could come over, grab a place to stay and then they could work and then go back and do their thing. Well, we don't have that flexibility anymore and those types of quad systems give us those flexibilities.
Right, okay.
And that's how they handle it on the mountain.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Lori?
Yeah.
Later just, um, address the addiction issues.
Okay.
Offer mental health facilities and counseling centers and options for counseling.
Great. Do you guys have any, uh, mental health facilities or are they close to those?
No.
No?
Not jails, that's our mental health. And you can go to the United Community Health and maybe get an appointment if they have time for you during a four hour window.
A bed in the ED for a little while, but yeah, no mental health, no.
Well, it looks like Mary Jo, you also.
Well, I kind of, it's interesting. Laura was talking about the actual physical aspect of homes. And you and I were coming up with the, what we presume to be behind homelessness, which started out mental health and addiction.
Okay.
Jobs and social support. These aren't really programmed, didn't really answer your question, but there you go.
That's okay. Um, I mean, it's a good way to think about how to categorize possible solutions because it's such a big issue that you need to come at it from a lot of directions. So this is.
But it's interesting because you're, you're actually thinking about the physical, how do I stay in a home? How do I pay?
I, I deal with homelessness as an economic state, you know? And that, that there are addicts who can maintain a home. There are people with those challenges that have a home, but if you don't have people or homes for people with less, fewer resources than we have homeless people, you know?
Roger, what, uh, what did you have here?
My, my biggest problem is the community needs to have the grips of where, uh, it's the type of thing, not my backyard. It can be behind Joe Blow's house, but I don't want it behind mine. Or it needs to be someplace else in, until the community comes to grip, grips with that one. That's huge. And then I, I would suggest that we already have a model that works in this town. It's called family promise. If they utilize the way family promise operates, uh, and then working with the churches and again, as like family promise does, I think there's a lot that can be accomplished using the model that we have in front of us.
I'm guessing there are many different reasons for homelessness.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Where family promise can help and where it may not help and.
Well, and I'm not saying family promise do it, but use that model that has been developed.
Right.
Which I think is wonderful.
And maybe expand it to beyond families, so single women, single men.
Oh, that's, oh, that's what I wanted.
Now, is everybody familiar with family promise? Okay. Allison, did you have any others to add?
Um, I think it's, I think they've been said, more funding for drug and alcohol treatment. Day center for male and social services. And when I say small nodes, I mean like, there isn't one part of our county that should carry the burden to help this population. We need to have it accessible for the population, which often doesn't have cars or, or, well, we live in their cars, which is also homeless. And yes, there are too many causes and it's a very complicated issue, so.
So although it's forming shelters, not having them all concentrated in one area, making them accessible. All right. Nikki, did you have?
Yeah, I did. Um, so in terms of it, you know, thinking about that beyond Lincoln City, it's a national issue. And I know, I've been involved with, actually this topic quite a lot as I've been here in Lincoln City. And you know, part of it is that we have people who are residents of Lincoln City who have hardship. And then there are a lot of people who come to Lincoln City and are homeless. So there's those two populations to look at and think about. So, Courtney, so I think that's really important.
Okay.
And I know that because, um, a lot of people go to our churches in our community. And I know of one church where they ask, where are you from? And many times they're not from our city, they're from other places. Um, so again, it's getting at the root, education, mental health, addiction, aging, you know?
Okay.
But I think, thinking about, we have two populations really of homelessness, yeah.
Stuart, you still writing or are you ready to share?
I was breaking the rules here, right? This is a bigger one.
That's all right.
So, so three points. Uh, one, measure it. How many people, quantify it, you know, age, sex, male, female, you know? Where from, how, like, measurement. Two, uh, define the scope of services. Again, look at other communities, best practices, transfer knowledge into the community. And then the third one, you know, I mean, look at Patrick Alexander, you know, trying to really struggle and try and get support for the, uh, the shelter. One of the things that irritates me is, it's temperature dependent, you know? Folks, you know, if the temperature of the bomber falls below a certain, you can be open. You know, why can't we have a shelter that's, you know, supported and for the homeless? Okay, as a temporary fix until the community figures it out as to, you know, what it's going to do. So, that's my.
Okay, can I take these?
Maybe two to look at what work has been done. It's really important in our community because there has been a lot of work done. I mean, we did have immense shelter in Lincoln City in the past. And, you know, what, what went wrong with that? I mean, I think if we look at it and can learn from what's already happened would be really important.
Okay, Nikki?
I don't have three.
All right.
I just have one.
I always like to challenge people.
I feel like we need a homeless shelter and we need one place where we can send people that need help.
Because I feel like collectively as a, as a community, I know where I work, we, we do referrals as often as we can, but there's nowhere to refer people. And the same thing with the chamber, same with the churches. We all find ourselves spending a lot of time on the phone, they've been calls that are fruitless and, and it would just be, just a better use of our collective time if we had one central place that we could send homeless people who need vouchers and assistance and advice and connection with medical services. And I don't know how you keep beds open, that might be part two, but it just feels like a lot of waste of time to spend finding service, trying to find services that aren't there. And I have, on my, on my sick, you know, I have visible, which is, which speaks to Roger's point about how no one, one would like a homeless shelter, but no one wants it in their backyard. It would have to be visible or else it wouldn't do anybody any good. Right on 101.
Does everyone know about 211? That you can call 211 and they'll connect you with services?
Yes.
Okay. Is that through the county, the regional, through the state?
Through the state, okay.
Um, any other? Steve, you still have a few?
What other people have said, that, uh, health facilities, policies to help ensure people don't fall into homelessness and maybe more than, well, homeless shelter. Where I'm the north of town, where I was south of town.
Do you guys do a lot of regional collaboration on this issue? Allison's looking at me like I said.
Not enough.
Not, not enough.
Wouldn't it be fair to maybe add a sticky note up there to collaborate with regional partners?
Yeah.
Just an ide, just an idea. Um, all right, I'll throw that up there.
Our regional partners who are experts? Yeah, that would be great.
I just, yeah. It's true, we could have some more side conversations about other ideas, but.
But there are people who are experienced in all of these various facets that we should be supporting and working with and, you know, collaborating with on how we can help them do better jobs.
Right, and sometimes there's access to more funding and resources to support from the ideas you mentioned through partnerships.
Yes.
Uh, okay, so the next question I want you to consider, thank you for all of your ideas that you shared there. So, um, we talked about earlier these year-round family wage good jobs coming to Lincoln City to raise, you know, raise the bar for everybody. So, um, say we're, we're setting out to do that. What are the types of businesses or types of industry that you want to attract for your community? I'm asking you to be specific here. Think about, you know, anything you've seen somewhere else, um, you know, what you think that's in here. We've talked a lot about ecotourism earlier, but what types of industry or, or businesses, specific businesses can you see, um, serving this community and fitting in in Lincoln City? And there's no rule here for three, just whatever you can. If anybody's ready, feel free to shout out. I'm handing you post-its. I'm starting the sentence. Nikki, are you ready?
Um, I don't have to, actually.
That's okay.
But I'm just thinking about supporting those who work from home, so to build the infrastructure for that to happen.
All right, can I grab that from you?
But I didn't.
I'll put infrastructure on.
I didn't, just grabbed it very well on my sticky.
When I type up the notes, I'll know what you, I'll know what you meant.
Well, actually piggybacking, I must be in a bad mood tonight. I said we have no reliable. I said we have no reliable infrastructure to support industry or manufacturing on the coast.
Okay.
And that's not answering your question, and it's really a downer, but if you want it, you can have it.
Okay. So, any infrastructure, like roads, transportation?
Electricity, water, I mean, things that.
All, all of the above.
That we know that there's enough of, that won't break, will fall apart when there's a winter storm.
Okay, so, well, it's imagine that all of this infrastructure has been upgraded. Is there anything, could you see anything specific then that you'd want to attract? If you were in charge of business recruitment, what would be the first thing you'd go after?
Small manufacturing of some kind.
Okay.
But I don't know what it would be. Maybe you have.
It could be anything, I've, whatever, whatever. We call artisanal manufacturing.
Okay.
It's a small two or three person or one a person thing. And we have shop, we have a number of them, believe it or not, like, Courtney Eckleton, remember? This guy's got this little, little tiny shop where he's manufacturing things for, you know, international golf club companies, manufacturing things for NASA. And just kind of provide incubators for the space for that kind of thing, it would be really good. You don't need to be, you don't need a chip plant. A one and two-person shop, that provides a lot of income.
What else, Sid Richard, since you're talking, you've got some other ones over here.
Yeah, adventure things, zip lines, rope course, Kennedy Walk.
Okay.
Tourism, bird watching kayak tours, nature hikes. And then my personal favorite is micro breweries with tours.
It sounds like my perfect vacation.
That's the whole idea.
I'll spend a weekend there.
Yeah.
A week.
Yeah, you would need, you would need more than just a weekend to get through all those micro breweries. All right. What else? Steve?
Outdoor equipment manufacturing, like canoes or kayaks. Outdoor education, schools might be able to be, bring public education, public school students from throughout the state if you are in coast to learn about the Oregon coast ecology. And I had a third one, oh, it was yours, the outdoor adventure.
That outdoor education schools, even at the high school that came up as well, that students would like to take more, take better advantage of the area they live in as a way to not. All right, Lori?
That is building supply store.
Okay.
Home goods, bedding, we don't have anything like that. And then more adventure, like bikes, bike shop, place to buy kayaks or more places to rent them.
Okay.
That type of thing.
Great. Let's see, Laura?
So, because I'm insistent that we're going to have broadband training for more micro solo entrepreneurs and work from home folks.
Okay.
And then those industries, art industries, and then the support services for those industries because there'll be a whole lot of tech that's now supported by that.
Okay.
And then entertainment centers, so EMs, visitor's centers, things like that. And then more facilities for artists and boutique businesses to be able to have little incubating centers and small storefronts.
Okay. Yeah, an idea of pop-up shops has come up a lot.
We need an RV supply store here. I thought one anywhere on. Oh, what store? Yeah, when RVs break down and they need to be.
There's a local RV repair business in town, I know.
Yeah, they have an ambulance.
Who haven't heard from yet? Roger, Stuart?
I think this would be an ideal location for umbrella manufacturing.
Umbrella manufacturing?
Very good.
I just, of course, but you know, you can probably get creative, all right?
Could be one of those called, what did Roger call it, parts of the whole?
We have golf courses, golf umbrellas.
I think this area could get creative with industries in agriculture. It's a temperate climate, it's a maritime climate. You can get into greenhouses, you can get into vertical, gardening, you know, it's just an interesting area. I think this area could get creative with agriculture. How to support the fishing industry, the craft industry. Or how to look into certain advanced things as relates to the earth, you know, what's going on in the rest of the world. Energy, anything to do with wind, rain, movement. Home-based opportunities. I think, you know, get creative about that stuff. And I think, you know, pragmatically, a center for innovation and entrepreneurship. So it takes slightly beyond business incubation. But it takes talent, it takes ideas, it takes the creativity in the region. And then it starts coaching and manifesting and developing and providing entrepreneurship for those folks. They get them out into the world with their ideas and what they're doing. But that takes, you know, that takes vision, that takes resources, that takes planning. So, and then you get some of these walks in the doors, says, hey, I've got a new idea for an umbrella. I don't wait, they go.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else I haven't heard from yet? Roger?
I looked at education tied to the environment. And I'm thinking more, not so much the children outdoor school, as bringing people here to train them, how to teach children to enjoy the outdoors and the environment, whatever it happened to be. Utilizing the community college, expanding the community college. I've always thought it would make a wonderful opportunity for a business to have their corporate offices here. Can you imagine a insurance office that has the Spanish head and all of their employees get to look at the ocean all day long? There's surf tides, I know, once upon a time, when Sid T. Rogers owned it, had the thought and dream of selling it again to corporate America, turning surf tides into offices. And a hospital does a heck of a job bringing professionals to Lincoln City for one and two days. I'd like to see them change that policy where those professionals are here all of the time. Make the opportunities available for, for the health, again.
Specialists.
Specialists here all the time instead of just one and two days.
Great.
There's one other area that I think is key. And that is the reality of the geography of the area. And that we are in a tsunami area, we are in an earthquake area, there's, there's those realities. But I think there is an opportunity for some business to get creative about, you know, if something did happen, you know, did you jump in a pod and, you know, jettisoned somewhere or could you be protected somehow? There is some technologies out there where, you know, if you're hit by a water, you can jump into something and you're protected. And it just seems to me that this area, again, if it got more, you know, I would say get more creative, when you start getting creative and innovative and you start looking at the realities of the area, how could that be converted into business? How could that be converted into opportunity? And it requires just thinking and then resources and research, that sort of.
So this is associated with emergency preparedness then?
Yeah, because it's a reality of the areas.
Makes sense.
Okay, so I'm just writing down opportunities based on the geography and just.
Emergency preparedness?
Emergency preparedness, okay.
So?
Yeah, I mean.
Anything else, Allison? Did you have childcare?
Childcare?
A business opportunity?
Yes, it came up a couple times and it's on, it's on that list twice. We've, we've done well in the last few years partnering to create more opportunities, but I think they're still in need. Heard that a lot at the open house, there were a lot of young families there, several times.
Childcare options, as, you know, the mom is standing there with kid hurting children. It's like I can see.
Might be combined with, you know, we have a high percentage of retirees and if you're in a, where you match emergency childcare with retirees, you might be able to get there with. When school is shut unexpectedly, yeah.
So senior center and daycare together?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Senior spends.
Find the most hurting person in the community, pursue something like that.
All right, any other ideas?
I just thought of one.
Okay.
I saw a wonderful video about an artist colony slash senior living concept. I have, which I think would be wonderful for Lincoln City. It's, it's based, it takes a low-income senior living business and then sort of converts it into really meaningful art, music and, and other kinds of opportunities, really woven into everything that they do. And, and it's, it's a really cool concept.
Yeah, another project I worked on, I met these people, they have this program in Portland called The Geezer Gallery. And, and it's, it's really cool, it's, they provide programming, they've moved around to the entire metro area and work with a lot of senior centers. They have a contract with Marquee, who has, I think, eight or so facilities in, in the Portland metro. But they bring in creative art programming and music programs and stuff for, for the residents there. And it's been just really, really popular. And they, they do different programs at different community-based senior centers as well. But it's called The Geezer Gallery, it's pretty cool. They've got some great stories.
The difference between an organization like that and what I'm talking about is that the whole, it's like the seniors move to an artist colony. Versus having the, having the program come to them and, and, you know, be forced upon them, they live. It's, it's part of their everyday lives because they've chosen to come to an artist colony. Very inspiring. Yeah, it's really cool.
All right. Any other ideas on, lots of, lots of variety here.
Well, I thought, I thought of one more thing, is the idea of retreat center, retreats. Because I know, and one of the things I had to do, I had to arrange for two retreats for groups of about 25. And always looking for a place where we could go and we could learn and then we could, you know? And so, there's a market for that because we've got the, you know, you could have a retreat center kind of space or have somebody take on that space and then we've got places for people to stay, so.
Yep, this is a.
And, and you know what, it was with all nonprofits and the, a couple places I'm thinking of, they were constantly booked. It, it's a big.
Yeah, it's a big business.
It is a big business, yeah.
All right, so for the state, if there are any other ideas, I hate to cut off your brainstorm, even I'm trying to watch our time as well. I'm just, I want to close it with just anything else, any other comments on the vision or specific ideas that you have not had the chance to express yet outside of this topic? Richard, I apologize, I saw you had a couple notes over here where you were talking about the homeless. Did we cover it?
We covered it.
We covered it, okay. Anything else? When you're hosting your own focus groups, one question I have on there, depending on the time and the flow of energy with your group, I'm not having you guys do it because you are already very familiar with this list, but you can pass around the list of ideas if you want to kind of help people get their minds thinking about different things. And one question you can ask is, you know, list anything, take a look at that list and share anything that jumps out to you as something you absolutely would love to see implemented. And vice versa, is there anything on that list that you or hope never gets implemented in Lincoln City? So, another option for another question, depending on, on your group and the time you have allotted to you. But now I just want to debrief for a second. Any questions on, on what we did or how we did it? Would you feel comfortable going out to some of your networks and, and leading the exercise that, the same discussion? Seeing heads nodding? Yes? You could do it? I feel like you guys will do it. It's fairly easy, but to make it even easier, we put all the resources online. If you need post-its or markers or flip charts or whatever, we'll, we'll make your job easier to do this with a group of people. Just reach out to Kate and she'll, she'll hook you up with some stuff. And make sure that you have what you need to lead a group. Any questions about that?
What's the timetable again on this?
Okay, I'm glad you asked that. So, just outreach toolkit, you have your overview, your guide, your meeting sign-in sheet, the vision idealist, and then there's a reporting form on there, on the drive as well. So make sure, you know, you keep track of how many participants you have so we can add it into our database and let everybody know. And then the dates, I don't know why this looks so funky on here, but we want to complete the focus group outreach by March 16th. So get your group scheduled, this gives you a little less than a month. And again, when you're scheduling it, I mean, an hour is ideal. I mean, we just spent almost that much time just going through these questions with this size of the group. So you kind of get a sense of how, how fast it goes. Post-its make it go faster, just, just a tip. Okay, the vision team, the draft plan review, so we'll have a draft, if we can get all this outreach wrapped up by the 16th and all the things happen as they need to happen, we'll have a draft ready for April 16th. Planning to take that to the planning commission on the 17th to blast it out to our, our, the e-blast list, our distribution list on the 18th to make sure that people know that it's out there, it's on the website, it's available for review and comment. Give people a couple weeks to comment on it, so, and close those on May 1st. And then turn around any changes that need to happen to it and get it to the council and then May, March 14th. Questions about timeline?
Can you, the focus group information, would you like to give to Kate?
Yes, yep, send those to, send your reporting forms to Kate. And if you have one thing, one other thing that's out on the drive, so, like Taj had a situation where the realtors meeting, they had 80 people there, so obviously you cannot lead a group, a focus group with that many people. So another resource that's out on the drive is we set up just forms for him with a couple questions where they just had small table discussions. So he passed the forms around to the tables and at their tables, they had just a little group discussion and filled out their responses there. So, because he only had 10 minutes and with that size of a group, so you, you know, there's different tools out there. If you run into a situation like that and you need something else, just please let us know and we'll, we'll troubleshoot that with you and figure out what will work best with your group dynamic. All right, any, anything else for the good of the group?
Yeah, you have that page right there. Is that scheduled for us? Is that somewhere in the?
I'll send this out to, I'll put the presentations, we've been posting it on the website and then we'll, I'll get it up on the website and send you guys the link. And I'll just include those dates in the email so you got them handy. Richard, anything else that you want to add?
That's great.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of your comments tonight, good luck with your focus groups. And I heard it's, my husband just sent a message saying that it was so hard in Portland.
It is again tonight?
Yes.
Are you, are you going home tonight?
Yes, I am. I, well, I think, I have a meeting in the morning somewhere else, so I need to get back.
A four-wheel drive?
Yes, I do a four-wheel drive, so I'll just maybe a slightly slower drive home. But it's either do it tonight or do it at the Cracker Don's, I don't know what's, what's better.
There's other alternatives to do it.
And survive.
We're driving, we work out of the.
I know, I know. And I, the logical thing would just be to stay if I didn't have all these other meetings scheduled first thing in the morning.
The thing is, those meetings are going to be canceled because of this. That's right.
I don't know. No, you know, I'm surprised, really, honestly, we've got this thing, nothing, nothing we could cancel. Of course, no. Really, because I'd be great.